The eleventh and a little past six thirty, we'd like to get our council meeting started. I will, at the very beginning, ask everyone to please speak up tonight. We don't have microphones, so in order for everybody to be able to hear when you share something, please speak loudly. That's for the council as well as everyone in the audience. So thank all of you for being here. We appreciate it very much. As always, we'll begin our time together with our invitation and our pledge of allegiance. I'll ask Mayor Pro Tim Devaney if you would, to please say our prayer.
Actually, Mr. Clay is getting our invitation tonight.
Great.
Everyone, let's pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for our town, our neighbors, our local officials, the businesses, our churches, the families that make Summerfield great. I ask that you soften our hearts for the obedience of your scriptures and forgive those who do us harm. I pray for this council meeting tonight. Give us wisdom and give us guidance that as we deliberate on these items before us, that you make every decision be right in your eyes and for the benefit of your Lord. Amen.
Thank you, God. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, Mr. Mayor, on our introduction, I expect Town Attorney, he could start with that.
Jim Hoffman, Town Attorney.
This is...
Lisa Beerlin.
John Doggett.
Keith Clay.
Lynn Williams Devaney.
Tim Sessions.
Janelle Robinson.
Jonathan Hamilton.
I'd like to welcome Ms. Beerlin. She has stepped in at the last moment to be here to be our clerk this evening, and I think we're also going to be talking about perhaps her helping us on an interim basis as our town clerk. So wish to thank her very much for agreeing to be here and help us out tonight.
Thank you.
Moving on to our consent agenda. Is there any discussion over the consent agenda or anyone like to make a motion?
Yes, I want to make some adjustments to the consent agenda. As far as the minutes, both open session and closed session on five twenty-nine and six-six, those need to be removed. They were not in the packet nor have we received them in any other form. In addition to that, we don't have any committee or board reports for any minutes, so we need to not approve any of those. And in addition to that, on item number ten, which was the public hearing, I just wanted to make sure that we give the public three minutes for public comments during that hearing and also on item eleven, the same thing during that public hearing, just make sure that the public understands they will get three minutes for that one as well. And one more thing, sorry. Also, as under item twelve A, Kimberly Horn is not here. It's only the Trails and Evidence Space Committee, NPO, NCDRT, and our presentation from Council Member Robinson.
I'd like to add to what Ms. Devaney just said and remove the fee schedule that's in our packet. I don't know much about this, and I think we can defer this to another topic.
That relates to what item on the agenda?
It's not on the agenda.
Yeah, it fell in the budget area. It was in with item eleven, and it was just stuck in there. We'll take that off. And Ms. Beerlin, I can give you or instead add if you need it. It'd be great.
So we have a motion to amend the consent agenda. So do you accept Mr. Clay's additions to your...
I accept them, yes.
So I'm going to recognize that as a motion. Ms. Beerlin said, okay, with you, you have that? Okay. So we'll recognize that as a motion. Do we have a second?
One second.
Have a motion and a second. Further discussion. Here and now, we'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, and it is unanimous. Moving on to item number five. Does anyone have any announcements?
I would like to make an announcement, Mr. Mayor. We have had volunteers... It doesn't matter. We've had volunteers step up to help in the parks. SRA is taking care of the sap field, so we really appreciate SRA taking care of that so our kids and students can go ahead and continue to play ball. In addition to that, we have members from the community that are taking care of the community center, the immediate facility, vicinity around it, including the playground and the bathrooms outside. We also have another member who is willing to take care of the rest of the Summerfield park that is behind us. And then we also have a member from the community who has stepped up, and they are going to take care of the dog park. So our calendar is full, and everything's going to be nice and clean, and we're going to have a happy summer.
Thanks for some of the volunteers here. A few of them are here. Would you stand up so they can recognize you? Go ahead, stand and go ahead.
Any other announcements?
And of course, we just hired Dana. There's nothing really exciting about that. I think we've got a lot of a bright future ahead of us. She's not here tonight, but she will be next time. We already knew that she couldn't make this meeting when we voted on her. And the planner has started. Matthew from InFocus started today. So again, we're excited about what the future holds for Summerfield.
Any other announcements? Here and now, I'd like to make an announcement. Over the last few weeks, as everyone knows, we have had a departure of our town staff varying, I guess, in range of service from anywhere from six months up to a little over twelve years. And it's normally our tradition here that we would celebrate those folks and be able to present them with a plaque. And with the way things have unfolded, that has not presented itself as an opportunity. But I didn't want to let it go by without saying a fond farewell and a big thank you to those people who have served our town with all their heart and done such a great job over the years. So I'm just going to share their names. Jeff Ford, Parks and Rec. Cheryl Boar, Assistant to the Manager and our Events Coordinator. Dee Hall, our Finance Director. Brad Rents from Planning. Sarah Tibbetts, who is our Town Clerk. Daniel Ware, Planning Tech and Code Enforcement Officer. Rick Biggs, Parks and Rec Attendant. Tanner Nance and Jaeger Nance, who have been the seasonal attendees and attendants for our athletic park and the park here, community park here behind us. So we appreciate those folks very much. Also, yesterday was not only Dee Hall's last day, but it was also Scott Whitaker's last day. Scott's worked for the town for twelve years, and we appreciate his service. And also, while I'm announcing, we'd like to express our appreciation to the Doggett family from Doggett Field. This past Saturday, they put on a big fundraiser for Scott and Emily Sarah, who's working her way, fighting a battle currently with cancer, and had a very successful fundraiser. Currently, we raised about twenty thousand dollars. If anyone would be interested, you know Scott was an employer of our town, anyone would be interested in contributing to that, please see me or call me. I would love the opportunity to talk to you about that. So a big thank you to the Doggett family. They did such a great job. Or you can talk to John Doggett there as well. So a big appreciation to them, big appreciation of Scott Whitaker and Dee Hall, who have finished up their service yesterday, and all of our staff. They will be greatly missed. We'll move on to item number six, our Emergency Services Report, Summerfield Fire District.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have the Summerfield Fire District information. If you want to come on the fire district here, they can represent.
Okay, what about the Gophers County Sheriff's Department?
Yep. For the month of May, the Sheriff's Office responded to two hundred and sixty-two calls for service in the Summerfield town limits, resulting in thirteen case reports.
Item number seven, is there anyone here from any committees that have a report or would like to report on their committee? Item number eight, public comments. As the Mayor Pro Tim spoke earlier in reference to the public hearing, public comments is the same. You have three minutes. We ask you, if you would, when you come up, give us your name and your address, and it's fine whether you live in Summerfield or out of Summerfield. If you give us your name and your address, your three minutes will start then, and I think I'll be letting you know when your three minutes expire. So the first one I have is Daniel Deal.
I think he just... What do you have to say? That's part of the resoning?
I'm sorry, sir.
It's part of the resoning?
Oh, this is... Yes, this is for public comments. I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay. Nicole Landau.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Nicole Landau, and I am resident of Greensboro. My address is eighteen oh four Marion Street, and that is two seven four zero three. And I'm here tonight both as a bicycling commuter and also as the project coordinator for bicycling in Greensboro, which is Greensboro and greater Greensboro areas advocacy group. Before the bridge closed along the NY, I actually commuted to Summerfield frequently, and that's for various reasons. Greenways are our ways, so they're safer than public streets and have well-connected network can allow people to travel in a way that's safer than being overloaded by. And there's so many benefits to greenways, and I'm sure you guys are familiar with most of those. But there are also a couple of misconceptions, and this is my effort tonight to provide everyone with facts so that you have the knowledge to make an informed decision on the A and Y extension. So the first misconception is that greenways lower property values. There is ample evidence that the opposite is actually true. For example, there was a study done that was published in the Journal of Finance and Economics entitled "The Relevant Impact of Trails and Greenbelts on Home值". Property values in Charlotte, North Carolina, in that study were found to increase an average of three thousand two hundred dollars if within five thousand feet of a greenway. According to a well-sourced document that the U.S. Department of Agriculture on Conservation and Offer Options with Economic Benefits, greenways can increase property value of nearby parcels by five to thirty-two percent. And it also notes that the cost of the acquisition of land for greenways can be countered by the fact that the property values increase and the property tax does as well for the towns. The other misconception is that crime will increase. According to Henderson County, North Carolina's Greenways Master Plan, that does provide references, crimes don't typically happen in places where there isn't easy access to getaway vehicles and where there are other people. Greenway users are visible to other greenway users. Multiple studies have shown that greenways are some of the safest places in America. Adjacent property owners, greenways, trails experience less vandalism and crime than other neighborhoods. And from Greensboro's Downtown Greenways website, trails and greenways are likely to reduce crime by cleaning up the abandoned railway lines and actually that would otherwise attract people. And this way, they can attract people to transportation and other positive activities. The city of Greensboro currently has over eighty mile trails. Since nineteen ninety-seven, there has been no serious crime on greenport trails. A survey was conducted on three hundred and seventy-two trails across the U.S. by the Rails to Trails Conservancy. Major crime along urban and suburban trails is much less likely than in parking lots or public streets. And I was just... Oh, is that time up? Okay. Well, anyway, actually, that was everything I really had to say. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa Perryman.
Hi, Teresa Perryman, seven four zero one, Green Lawn Drive, Summerfield. I just don't even know where to begin, what has, what I learned that's happened in the last twenty-four hours. I do, and I will find out. And I also propose to find out on this zoning that procedures are not being followed, and I would like to know why they're not being followed. You don't want to answer me, I know that. And other than that, I am so thankful you all are here, and having fun.
Chris, I'm with the five zero two one Shoreline Drive in Tunkfield. I just want to speak in support of the greenway expansion and the contract amendment. The... My family uses the greenway multiple times a week, and even with the bridge later, we still use it. It would be wonderful to go ahead and connect that greenway down to the Green River, the trail network. We walk up there on those trails. We drive bikes on those trails. I want to thank the community, my family. For our physical health, mental health, the benefits of being outdoors and being physically active, putting your physical and mental health as well back in there. And I think the proposed order is the best way to promote the community, to connect our communities down to the rest of the town, to connect with that greenway. I believe in all of them, and I would do that.
Thank you, sir.
Would you mind if I stood back here? Could you all hold a few minutes?
Just please speak loudly.
Pam Torcanal, C O C R, A M sixty-eight hundred, Brookbank Road. I'd like to bring to the attention of an email that was sent to me. And this email was written on the thirteenth of January twenty twenty-four, and it's from Jonathan Hamilton to Michael Thielen, who is with Rommel, Bond, and Dickinson, a law firm up in Roswell. Hello, Mr. Thielen. I have a few questions for you from Councilmembers below. If you prefer a phone call, let me know, and we can do that too. I'm still awaiting specifics about the ultimate direction our council wants to take our DDO in and plan to follow up with Mr. Mitchell, no matter who Mr. Mitchell is. As soon as I do, I copied him on this email as well. First, I may ask if there's any issue stopping the town from repealing the three resolutions adopted on September the eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. If not, is this something that we can do without providing notice at regular scheduled meeting, or does this require something more? Next, if the town council seeks to completely repeal the previous tax amendment, what notice is required of the council to do that? I assume it would be the same requirement that provided for in one six zero ten D dash six oh one, when it was amended. If we were to have a special joint meeting with the planning board, do we have to specifically state what you're going to do, or are we allowed to leave it more open? For instance, special meeting to repeal ten five meeting versus special meeting to discuss tax amendment and the annexation, would the latter be added notice to still allow us to repeal and/or replace the various tax amendments? Finally, does your firm have a public relations staff available to the town as well? If not, any referrals? And then, I guess this is Mr. Thielen writes back to Johnson. We've analyzed your question. Are you available this week for a phone call? Why? Could you please tell me, given time in the minutes, a motion to have you write this letter to Rommel, Dickinson, and Bond to ask this question of them? On January the third, first, we have town council, I mean, excuse me, we have a town manager as well as Bob Horneck sitting here, the town attorney. Why did you not ask these questions of either one of them? Will you answer?
We can answer that.
Okay. Is it applicable for you to use a committee or a board on the town of Summerfield to try to get through something that obviously the four of you all have already decided what you want to do? So it looks like that you're using that vote.
Now, I will answer some of these questions. I have a chance to respond to them.
Thank you for your time, Ms. Torcanal.
And now, and now it's not that time yet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dan Lind.
My name is Dan Laxaliver, seven zero zero seven, Polo Farm Strife. I've lived there for twenty-five years. My wife and I use the greenway four or five days a week. It's an absolute treasure of a resource for Summerfield. While the bridge between Strawberry Road and Burr Mill has been out, we've had the opportunity to cycle NY north, so that's been great. But as you know, the greenway ends at Summerfield Road. So I'm here tonight to ask you to vote yes for the greenway expansion and the approval of funding for several reasons. Safety, it's not safe to bike, walk, or run on the roads in Summerfield. The greenway gives us that ability to do that safely. Community, the greenway brings the community together. I see my neighbors out there. I see people. So it brings the community together. Access, if I come north, we have access to Summerfield's small villages. We love to bike up to Papa John's or Amagia's. Down there, we get into the car. The greenway would give us the ability to do that. And then finally, the greenway promotes health as well, and that's very important. So I ask you to vote yes to the expansion and yes to the funding. So thank you.
My name is Lexi Klein, a little seven nine six two six, Michael Road. I stand before you to express my unwavering support for the completion of the Atlantic and Yadkin A and Y Greenway project. Tonight, I'd like to address three key points. The misconception that trails increase crime, the fact that trails increase property values, and the role this trail plays in uniting our divided communities. First, there is a prevalent myth that trails increase crime in the areas they traverse. Numerous studies and real-world examples debunk this misguided notion. An extended study in Mecklenburg County aggregated data which concluded greenway-adjacent properties had lower crime rates seventy-five percent of the time, and the remaining properties saw no increase in crime. Research consistently shows that well-maintained trails often lead to a decrease in crime rates. One reason for lower crime is that communities with trails experience more foot traffic, which results in natural surveillance. This increased presence of responsible trail users acts as a deterrent to criminal activity. Further, more trails foster a sense of community ownership and pride, which further discourages crime. Not to mention, Summerfield already boasts a number of trails and has seen no increase in crime. An argument that trails lead to crime is completely moot. Using sound logic, it can be concluded that the completion of the A and Y Greenway would not only provide safe space for recreation, but also contribute to making our community safer. Second, trails have a positive impact on property values. Studies across various regions indicate that proximity to trails increase property values. Homes near trails are higher in demand because they offer access to recreational opportunities, scenic beauty, and a healthier lifestyle. For instance, a study by the National Association of Realtors found that homes near trails and green spaces can see an increase in value by as much as twenty percent. By completing the A and Y Greenway, we are investing in the future prosperity of our town, making it a more attractive place for potential homeowners, and enhancing the financial well-being of current residents. Last, and perhaps most importantly, the A and Y Greenway has the potential to unite our divided community. In a time where it often feels like we're more separated than ever, we need common spaces that bring us together. Areas of common space like the A and Y Greenway, where people can come together and speak regardless of political views, socioeconomic status, or other polarizing factors, are not just paths through the woods, they're pathways to connection. They provide a space where people of all ages, backgrounds, and walks of life can coalesce, enjoy nature, and engage in healthy activities. This trail will serve as a physical and symbolic link between different parts of our town, fostering a sense of unity and shared purpose. In conclusion, the A and Y Greenway is more than just a trail project, it's an investment in the safety, prosperity, and unity of Summerfield. By moving forward with this initiative, we are taking a significant step toward building a stronger, more connected, and more vibrant community. I urge you to support the completion of the A and Y Greenway and help us actualize this vision for the benefit of all residents. Thank you.
That is seemingly all the public comments I have. If there's anyone who filled out a public comments form for this public comment, who I've not called on?
Me. I'm sorry. Gail? I don't know. I tested it over here. I put it on the side desk, because we didn't have the desk over there.
Gail Dunham.
Gail Dunham, five eight, zero five, Summerfield Drive. And congratulations on the appointment of Dana Luther to be the town manager and the interim finance officer. She's had this job before. She's tremendous. She's, well, she's professional. She did excellent work, especially in the property development parks. Dana Luther is the one that ran the grants and funding, brought the engineering, final report, the inspection. We have complete spreadsheets on every capital project that she did, so that if there's a problem, you know where to go. And one of the things I would ask you to not approve the ten million dollar budget that is on your agenda, our wonderful finance officer in town, and her Dana Luther is also a CPA, she has offered to present to the board perhaps a more meaningful budget, more in line with all the changes that we've had recently. And I think that, I think you should let her do that professionally. What's on the agenda tonight is not if we love trails or not, and if we love bicycles. My family loves bicycles. My daughter was sixteen. She rode bicycles across the whole United States. I have a red wall over there, six inches deep, that follows the A and Y trail information for the past eleven, twelve years. There are better paths through people's front yards and taking property. The other thing is, this is, the only, the question tonight is, you can approve another hundred, what is it, another hundred and forty, or no, a hundred, yeah, another hundred fifty thousand dollars for engineering and design. There is a sheet that was presented, which was five hundred and forty-two thousand, it spent so far, but actually, that's probably not correct because you're giving Kimberly Horn eight hundred thousand. A great deal of work was done with Stewart, which was far more rural trails, didn't go through... The other thing is, this is, the only, the question tonight is, you can approve another 100, what is it, another 150, or no, 100, yeah, another $150,000 for engineering and design. There is a sheet that was presented, which was $542,000, it's kind of so far, but actually, that's probably not correct, because you're giving Kinley Horn 800,000. A great deal of work was done with Stewart, which was far more rural trails, didn't go through people's front yards, were not impacted by the fire department, the school buses, the police cars, everything. All they had was traffic. We've never even done a traffic study of Summerfield Road to see if this is the safest path. So, the, I would suggest that you not approve another $200,000, why not take a step back? Do what the original intent was, was to have an A&amp;Y trail that would connect with the Mountain City Trail. There's a lot of ifs right now, but actually, within the next year or two, I think you may know more. And not to build a trail to nowhere in the park. I have a great number that I could say. The original purpose was definitely to have it be rural, to get back to the Dr. S, the Dr. Williams, the Dr. Sellers survey that was done a long time ago. I'd like you, we should did that out. I think the numbers haven't changed, it was probably one of the best surveys the town ever did. I'd like you to take a look at that. And I have one thing I'd like to add. I wanted to share something for you, and then if you would have copies made. This is the check register, and years ago, the council received a check register each month.
Mr. 20 seconds, your time is up.
And you should try and do that in the future.
Thank you.
This is about our money, so I'd like another sentence or two.
Well, I'd like you, your time is up.
Maybe you should put it there. And I hope you'll have copies made. And you can have it every month.
So, we'll move on to item number nine, response to comments. That's to our town attorney, town staff, or to the council.
So, I think Ms. Torkenall earlier stated, she was talking about a communication that was between the town council and the attorney. An attorney that represents the town council, the town of Summerfield. So, Ms. Torkenall, would you mind telling us where you got that document?
Conversation would not really appropriate.
I think that it's really signed with this document.
So, that is what's called attorney-client privileged document. It's supposed to be...
You're not the attorney.
I'm sorry. It's an attorney-client...
Mr. Hoffman is attorney, and you signed it, Jonathan, you signed it, not as the attorney, you signed it Jonathan Hamilton, Summerfield Town Council.
That is correct. So, I signed it.
But you're not the attorney for this council.
Ms. Torkenall, I'd love to answer the question.
Well, engage in conversation.
Well, no, I was happy to make sure I understood, from what I understand, it's not being told. So, there was a communication between me and our attorney. Now, I was voted in as the liaison with our attorneys to handle the matters regarding land use and the annexation. So, I talked with different council members here, and based on those conversations, I emailed our attorney, and I asked him questions based off the things that were told to me. Now, what I'd like to know is, at some point, from what I understand, that attorney-client privileged document was given out by town hall to somebody here in town. And I believe it's the consensus, I believe it's the consensus of the council, that Mr. Hoffman, I believe he had contacted that individual, and we'd like him to disclose that. Mr. Hoffman, would you mind, and I hate to put you on the spot here, but it's been brought up, did you have a conversation with anybody regarding that, as far as it being given out?
I had a conversation with two people, to tell them that it's an attorney-client privileged document, and it was immediately released through a public records request and asked them not to investigate it further and to return and destroy their documents.
And after you asked them that, the council, wasn't it found online at that point? And are you okay with Mr. Hoffman releasing who it was that got the document?
I think that's appropriate.
I think the council, I, Mr. Hoffman, I don't want to put you on the spot, because I greatly respect you, and I think you are a fantastic addition to this town council. But the issue is that we do have, and I do believe that there is the farthest activity going on within this town, and I believe that there are connections that have been made within this town that they are using to further themselves and destroy others. And if they can't be in control, they will burn it to the ground. Well, I'm not, and neither are these other folks.
Oh, no. We're going to stay here.
Burn it to the ground, Jonathan. Burn it to the ground.
Okay. Order, please. Order, please.
Order!
I don't need help.
I think you do.
I think you do.
Well, then, you two can be accused as well.
I'm not going anywhere.
Okay. Do you have anything else to share, Ms. Town?
So, I did say that that was a, I did say that that was a normal communication that someone would give to an attorney. So, it's not unusual to ask questions to an attorney about what you can and what you can't do. And I think that it's pivotal, that definitely, it's become very obvious that it's important to have people on the council that understand that, because otherwise, I don't want someone to cower or shame, to shy away from saying, yes, I asked attorney about our legal options. And that is something that is good, that I did. And I think it's good that we continue to explore what we can and cannot do. Otherwise, we're just going to wander aimlessly. So, again, yes, Ms. Torkenall, you have an attorney-client privileged document that was leaked out.
I will respond to, Ms. Torkenall, I'm sorry, but the public comments time has passed. Thank you. I would like to respond to those comments, that when he said he talked to some council members before composing that letter, that doesn't mean all council members, just to make that differentiation. Any other comments from anyone on the council?
Everybody, I do have comment, everybody on the council agreed that Mr. Hamilton would be our liaison between the attorneys with the S on the end for us, because we didn't want everybody asking same questions, or if he collected everyone's thoughts.
I didn't say anything indisputed of that.
And I actually did say a couple of meetings, I believe, in the closed session, I asked folks if they had anything to do with asking attorney to let them know.
Yes.
And particularly which way they wanted to go. Now, Mr. Mayor Sessions, I don't think he was here in December at one of the meetings when we had a meeting about the annexation, I think that might have been when I was assigned that position. I can't remember if that's it or not, but I do know that he wasn't. You were there at the end of December, Mayor Sessions, at the later meeting that we had for de-annexation? I don't recall you.
16.
16, yeah. Mayor Sessions.
That was a, yeah, because that was an information meeting, it was to be an information meeting to get new council members up to speak.
And I definitely did say...
And I was not a new council member, so I did not attend.
And I definitely did speak.
And no action items were supposed to be taken at that meeting.
And I definitely did speak, in closed session, multiple times, to make sure that there's anything...
I'm just making it clear, we did not have a conversation about your email. Do you have anything to comment on that? That's all I'm saying.
Actually, no, I disagree with you. So, again, I said, I'm asking the attorney questions. If there's anything you want me to ask that attorney, Mayor Sessions was in there at the time. So, if there is...
So, even if just I had a question, just one person, if I had a question for the attorney, I could say, Jonathan, will you please ask the attorney this question for me? And then it was your job to get an answer from me.
That is correct.
Whether one person or five people.
That is correct.
Any other comments? We'll move to item number 10. The public hearing. Mr. Fuller, I know you all have met on this, I know it was unanimous. Do you, do you have the staff report? Is that what you're, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sir, is that what you referred to, that, Ms. Van?
We don't have minutes from the 5:20 meeting, and we do not have the statement of the recommendation for the planning board to recommend, and they approved it unanimously.
That's it.
But we, we just have that in our packets, that was looked out. Mr. Whitaker looked that out.
The town council, to my knowledge, never has the minutes from planning board before you act on any rezoning request, because they are not signed by me, because they're not scheduled to have it signed by me. But I am, I am willing to, the town council, so it was tiresome to summarize the case and make the recommendation.
Well, I appreciate that. Thanks, sir. Let's make sure before we proceed that we have all the things that we need to be able to legally and successfully complete the process. So, so the minutes question is answered. I do have the staff report here, and happy to read that, as Mr. Rents has read it in the past.
Planning board, you...
I have the staff, yeah, which is what they prepare after your meeting to make their recommendation. So, I would say at that point, I'm not aware of anything that we're missing, unless you all are aware of something that we're missing. Sir, Mr. Hoffman, we have an opinion we'd love to hear.
As long as you have a report from the staff, a report from the planning board, and a recommendation from the planning board, you can sit.
We don't have a technical plan to work.
Mr. Fuller? What do you need from the planning board?
There's a written piece of paper that we need from you guys.
We never prepare anything. I've never, I don't, I've never signed one in a second year.
Remember when we had the joint meeting and we had to pause so that you guys could get it to us? That paper that we have to have before we do this.
That was a special example, that's a special case, but I've done planning over 18 years, I've never signed anything before, before you have.
So, Mr. Hoffman, was all report, some way be sufficient?
Glad to get that. This is a no-brainer. This is an action for this property on the corner of Straighter Road and 150, actually two pieces of property, total of about 3.6 acres. And I'm doing this from memory, because I just called Father Martin to do this. The planning board considered a request back in January on this, on these two pieces of properties, and the planning board denied, recommended denial of that request, and I think that your meeting on the 3rd of February affirmed that 5-0. It was a request to expand the property, a pre-existing one-acre property that had been zoned commercial back, I think in 1965, 1974, some people's home. And the applicant wanted to expand it out for a larger piece of commercial property, but very limited use, to include 2 buildings totaling 18,000 square feet. The community meetings, both the community meetings, and the planning board and the town council, the community was adamantly against it. The applicant threatened to put a Jiffy Lube there or McDonald's if we didn't approve it. And the county, the residents said, let's take our chance, and the planning board agreed to them. And I think we should thank the applicants for this request, because they stood up and bought the property, and are now asking that this property be rezoned back from agriculture and commercial back to residential. And the applicant will have a chance, I think, to present her case in a few minutes. But I don't think we can ask for a better case where this community can come together on something that we should all agree is the right thing to do for our town. I hope you agree with that. If you have any questions, I would be glad to answer them. The planning board approved this unanimously 5-0, in fact, we even cut the public hearing short because no one was speaking again. Any questions?
I think that's sufficient. Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Fuller, if you would, stick around for...
I'm not going anywhere. Thank you.
I hope you ate the cheapest, do the best.
So, at this time, we'll hear from the applicant. Is it Jessica and Patrick Sterling?
Yes. Good evening. I'm Jessica Sterling. I live at 7422 Straighter Road, which is, you all agree, okay? Which is three doors down from the property. I think you said you have the staff report, right? So, you have a map in front of you. There's, you're going to have to read last time there's a board. So, I really, I very much appreciate Mr. Fuller giving such thorough history of it, you know, we all remember January, every meeting, there's some contention there, so I hope this one is the opposite. So, the request is to rezone the 3.2 acres of these two properties. The corner of one-acre square is currently business, and then the L shape around it is actually split zone, agriculture and ours first. So, we're just going to clean all that up, and make all of it residential, so clean up the map there. And what, as you see on the map, all the lots surrounding, all the properties surrounding this are zoned residential and agriculture. They are all either farms or single-family residences, south east west from nearly a mile, all the records, it's just single-family residences, so this is our neighborhood. So, this is our neighborhood, and you would like to have more single-family residences consistent with the whole area, all around it, in the same spot. So, our proposed zoning of residential is consistent with the Summerfield Community Plan on Community Character Preservation. Residential zoning at this corner would be compatible with the unplanned country drain that is Straighter Road. It's also aligned with the capital and the plan's value of appropriate housing and residential development, and we'd like to build affordable workforce housing at this corner. The attributes of the residential zoning district that we are focused on are single-family detached residences with ideal occupancy and a larger residence, which would be very consistent with the neighborhood, avoid for consistency across the area. From our conversations with the neighbors before and after we purchased the properties, this rezoning would be a welcome solution to this corner, and we hope, ask you to help us, please make a good choice for our community, and we ask for your support for our application. May I ask any questions?
Any questions from the council? I have the staff report. If anyone would like for me to, I'm happy to read it, I don't have to read it, but if anyone would like for me to, I'd have to.
Can you summarize it?
I can summarize it by reading it. So, this first part of the document is the staff report, this portion, and then it's approved, it's approved by Mr. Rents on page two, where the application is. So, this is the staff report. So, and I do, I do have the motions at some point, some of them like those, because I have not seen those anywhere. But before we do that, we need to move to the public hearing. So, at this time, we'll call a public hearing to hear from the public on this. As we spoke earlier, if you'll please come up, give us your name and your address, wherever you're from, and you have up to three minutes to speak, please, on the topic of the rezoning. So, I will, if you still like filling these out, one's over there, you can fill them out, have them up, and they can pass around. So, at this time, I'll ask Kristen Pearson, if she will.
Hello, I'm Kristen Pearson. It's okay, I'll get Kristen.
I'm so sorry. I have a daughter named Kristen, I just wanted to be Kristen.
It's okay. I'm Kristen, my husband, Adrian, I live at 4109 Straighter Court, which is right out from this lot, apart from our four children. I'm a public council teacher, so I was very relieved when we heard that it was up for rezoning to residential, saying school buses, drop the kids off, and keep Straighter Road safe. We were here a few months ago, facing a difficult situation with the developer, and the community was faced with envisioning the least evil, which was going to be a huge metal complex or threatened with a Jiffy Lube. We now have a better, more sensible path forward that could have been imagined with the original developers, but it was not. So, we recognize there will be exceptions needed, such as smaller lot size, we fully support this as a result, because this result was so much better than our developers. We also recognize that the new owners of this took a great personal and financial risk purchasing these properties, and we would hope they are able to at least one day develop new moderate-sized homes on smaller lots which are in line with that surrounding area. We solicit, so we fully support rezoning to residential, and we hope the town council votes yes to residential rezoning as well. Thank you all.
Thank you, Kristen Pearson.
Thank you. I know it's hard to say.
It was a little difficult. It was a little difficult, my apologies. Andrew Rowe. Is it Andrew?
Yes.
Is that right?
That's correct.
Andrew Rowe, 1068 N.C. Highway 150 West. So I live right beside the rezoning property, have a big wall in between. So the prospect of having a business, a large medical center, or was not a good prospect, in our opinion, so we did not support that at all. And the threat of having a Jiffy Lube or a big burner, you know, whatever, was also just as bad, in our opinion, for safety and whatnot. But obviously, this, I think, is certainly worth supporting, we support it, and hope you do, and both guests do the rezoning.
Thank you, sir.
Tom Armstrong, 7305, I have Auto Lake Drive. We're on the other side of 150, about five hours away from the property. We're totally in support of the rezoning request. We've been in all the meetings, and we support just the fact that...
Thanks, sir. Daniel Deal. I finally made it back to you, Mr. Deal, in full service.
My name is Daniel Deal. My address is four one zero five Strider Court. I live almost very close to the land that is being discussed here. Back when we had the discussion for the rezoning commercial, it was very, it was a tragic situation. I think like we have a lot of engagement of the community in fighting against it, and it was a situation that we took the gamble, but I guess everybody was willing to do so. And now Pat and Jessica took the lead to buy that and fix a situation that was called a loophole in the system, where it was a conversion in the middle of our zone. And so I thank for them to take the action, and I ask you to please approve the rezoning. Thanks, sir.
Did anyone else fill out a sheet, and I have not called your name?
Have it filled it out, I'll fill it out real quick. It was, they're in favor or against? Or both?
This is either...
All right.
Yeah, we'll recognize that, by that, fine.
Thank you.
Hey, Duane, will you fill that out? If you'll please give that in the sphere room, that is what I'm thinking, to leave it out in this.
Duane Crawford, 1106 N.C. Highway 150 West. At the beginning of this public hearing, there was discussion about a required signed document that must be conveyed from the planning board to the governing body before this hearing commences. That is in the general statutes, but it is more specifically in our UDO. It is much more clear that this governing body cannot proceed on a ordinance adjustment, a rezoning, until a signed document. It may be very well true, it has not been done as a matter of convention, but the UDO says it must happen, and it's been called out as a requirement. You cannot ignore it. You cannot ignore your UDO.
Mr. Mayor, if you need a signed document, I'd be glad to sign it tonight. Got the next paper?
I think, no, I think when, I think when this came up before Mr. Fuller, it, there was a requirement, it had to be at the beginning of the meeting, and so that has happened, but just give me just a minute.
And I do see, like, in the past, we do have a letter from you with your signature on it. I looked back to the February meeting, and that rezoning, we have a letter from you with your signature.
Give me minutes.
No. I just texted you.
It's a...
It's a letter from you to the council.
It's kind of a synopsis from the planning board. It's a statement of approval or against.
Is this the C state?
Yes, that. I'm just looking through the whole agenda to see if it's anywhere else.
While you're doing that, can I do a public comment? I'll fill the paper. Yep.
Donald Dill, 3406 Winslet Drive. I think that the applicant should be approved, maybe not tonight, based on what's being said now. But I think overall, she's presented her case, she has put all her time into this, been to all these meetings, but there is a technicality. I guess we were doing things inappropriately and not legal, according to what's being said right now. But I'm just saying that if it doesn't happen because of the legal technicality here, that this should be approved at a time that it's done properly. That's all I'm going to say. But I think it's a good plan, she's got all this money invested in it, and I just don't think it's, for her to be hanging out here, this is tough. But it's something we should have been following all the time. I guess that's the facts, then we got to follow the laws of this, over to our development plans.
Mr. Mayor, I gotta ask this question. We have tonight three planning board members here, and I think that that would be a corona today.
I have to look at what the UDO says. I don't know that...
I just want to ask.
Ms. Hall, would you prefer to wait for the next thing to vote?
I think if there's a conditional vote tonight, I can take a look at what the UDO says. If you need that requirement, then we'll have to pull it again.
I'd like to work a good vote tonight, and if you need anything, it sounds like we're still...
After we do. We will. What, what the mayor here?
Who knows those three ones?
What mayor, the commissioner vote had?
It depends on what the UDO says. UDO says approval must be in writing.
The whole thing will have to be done again.
Then it'll have to be done.
The whole thing will have to be done again. I've reached out to Mr. Rents to see if he knew the existence of the document, and he does not know, he was gone before it was signed, but he doesn't even know for sure. If he would confirm that it had been signed, he knew it was in town hall, I'd feel differently, but he, he is not.
And we need to terminate the public hearing and do it again.
May I ask one more question? When you say redo, does that mean that the planning board has to redo to become a...
No, they've already voted. Yes, Duane?
You could potentially table this to a time certain, at the next meeting?
I think we could, I think we could table it.
Something, consider.
Yeah, if someone would like to make a motion for us to table this until we have the correct documentation at the next meeting, I think that would be appropriate to determine to pursue that and try not have everyone have to come back again. So if anyone would entertain making that motion, we would entertain discussing it.
I have one more question for the chairman. Mr. Hoffman, if we can table it and we were to have, and I have no idea, but if we were to have an additional special call meeting at that time, could we add it to that agenda? Because right now, we're not slated for a July meeting. And the next time around would be August.
For a regular meeting.
For a regular meeting.
Call a special meeting.
So that would be appropriate to add that.
So that's potentially a two-month delay?
We're saying we would have a special call meeting addressed, that won't be such long.
I don't think it will be, but I think if we, if we table it right now, we're still in the public hearing, we can come back into the public hearing, which serves the general public well, because anyone who has not gotten to speak on this will have their opportunity to be heard, and we can close the public hearing, have the proper documentation in place.